Okay, is everyone ready? Bill, we all ready? A good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley.
Here.
Friedle.
Here.
Paulson.
President.
Beyondich.
President.
Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Sally.
Here.
Tuffy.
President, would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity from anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council, they're welcome to do so at this time. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to speak before the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is approval corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on May 28th, 2024. Item 5.2 is adoption of finance resolution number 24-011, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approve pay estimate one to Kraus Anderson for the Public Safety Center project in the amount of $181,755.35. Item 5.4 is approve the travel request for Britt C. Bennis and Pamela Bean to attend the MCFOA Region Two training, June 21st through 2024 in Sandstone, Minnesota, at a cost of $186.04. And finally, item 5.5, approve the transient merchant license for Jerry Stockset doing business as TNT fireworks. These are the consent agenda items for the council today, looking for council action.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Council Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda and is supported by Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Item six is appearances, there is no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening. Moved on to item seven is unfinished business, item 7.1, the clinic lease. I will ask our city attorney, Brian Lindsey, Brian, any other information or updates that you can provide regarding the clinic lease?
Thank you, Mayor. The real update is, we have, we've had a meeting since our last council meeting, and we're scheduled to meet again with Essentia on June 24th, I believe is the date.
June 24th, thank you very much. Okay, any questions or comments about the clinic lease? I'll move to item 7.2 is the property located at 410 Fifth Street South. Any updates on that, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, I have no additional updates at this point.
Hey, thank you. Council Beyondich.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to remove this item from our agenda going forward.
Motion by Council Beyondich to remove item 7.2 from being a regular item under unfinished business on the consent agenda, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, and it'll also be an ongoing discussion with respect to this as we, and keep the council updated as we move forward. Council Paulson. Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, move to item number eight concession, discussion items, item 8.1 is approve the additional election judges for the 2024 elections.
Move to approve.
There's three, so moved, okay. Was it moved by Council Motley? Moved by Council Paulson, supported by Council Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.2, adopt a resolution to accept the donation for park benches.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Motley, is there support?
Aye.
Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.3, adopt a resolution to accept an anonymous donation for the tennis for all facility. Move to approve by Council Friedle, is there support? By Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.4 is adopt a resolution to accept a donation for the Children's Memorial Park.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Motley, supported by Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.5, adopt the resolution to accept a donation for kids, cops, and cars.
Approve.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson, is there support? By Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.6 is adopt the resolution to provide for the issuance and sale and delivery of $7,225,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2024A. And just a clarification for the public, what is this for, Britt?
This is for the street project that's going on right now.
For the ongoing street project as we're moving forward.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further, looking for a motion?
Move approval.
Move to approve by Council Friedle, is there support?
Support.
By Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. On this, in our packet, the resolution in here, can we just have maybe some explanation as to how this impacts the taxpayers? Or if, is it just one, one payment a year on this, or is it over the course of time? If we could just maybe get a little clarification update.
In your packet, what it shows you, it does, it does show you on page 38 of your packet, the very top table shows you the dollar amount of the improvement portion, which would be the assessable portion, and then the utility portion for this existing portion of this project. There is no payments till 2027, as you'll see. The first payment would be $95,000 less the 20% minimum that we have to obtain from the assessments.
And the public hearings have been conducted already on these, for these streets, and the public is informed, so I just wanted that out there and clarified that we have taken direction and had the public hearing and taken input from the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Council Paulson. It has been moved and supported, has it been? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7, planning and zoning commission meeting that was held on June 3rd, 2024. 8.7A, approve the variance request for Thomas and Tracy Baldrica, 419 Fourth Street South, to allow a new 24 by 24-foot replacement garage at two and one-half feet from the rear yard, where five feet is required, and to allow a new 24-foot by 24-foot replacement garage at two and a half feet from the side yard, where five feet is required. Moved to approve by Council Friedle, supported by Council Beyondich, who's our liaison for the planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion, Council Paulson? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.7B, approve the variance request for Danielle and John Hess Swenson at 1916 Southern Drive, to allow a fence height of four feet, where three feet is required in the front yard due to hardship, chain link fences only come in four-foot pieces, and to allow a fence height of eight feet, where six feet is allowed on the side yard.
I'll move.
Moved to approve by Council Paulson and supported by Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And last item from planning and zoning, 8.7C, approve to consider the following rezoning of parcel IDs, number 090-0180-01376, located in the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, lying southerly of Highway Row S20, T58 North, R17 West, parcel ID 090-0180-01376, change it from R1 zoning to R3 zoning, and for the public's clarification, this is a piece of property up in Midway, near the old hotel, that borders Highway 53.
So moved.
Move to approve by Council Johnson, is there support? By Council Barnzelli, is there any further discussion? Council Beyondich.
And there were two public hearings on this rezoning, and nobody from the public was there, so it just moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee home meeting that was held on June 4th, 2024, and we'll turn this portion of our council meeting to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. On May 21st, 2024, at 9:00 AM, at our committee of the home meeting, Mr. Matt Reed, actually baseball boosters, Mr. Matt Reed, was there to thank the Park and Recreation Department on the work that has been done in stock field improvements this year, and he wanted to give a hats off to them, because it's, they say it's looking like a much better field. Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, discussed the request for approval for the proposed professional services agreement for the 2024 alley project in the amount of $5,925. It was moved and supported in the resolutions in your packet.
I'll move.
Move to approve by Council Friedle, is there support?
Support.
By Council Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Reed noted that the replacement of the second culvert at the entrance of 18th Street South and Highway 53 is out for bids and will be open next Tuesday. Once the contract is in place, they'd like to proceed at the same time that mindot is replaced in the first culvert, which lies in the mindot right of way. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the professional services agreement for the 18th Street culvert replacement project in the amount of $13,000.
Moved.
Move to approve by Council Motley, is there support?
Support.
By Council Paulson, further discussion? The sooner we get this done, the better. There's been some car damage there, because it's heaved up even more so now, so I'm glad we're moving forward finally with the, with some assistance with the collaboration with the state of Minnesota, so on. Has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Reed discussed the professional services agreement for the stormwater improvement project. It was, thankfully, all the fees that will be assessed for that stormwater improvement project will be covered by a grant that we have received from the MPCA. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the professional services agreement for the stormwater management plan in the amount of $96,124.
I'll move.
Move to approve by Council Johnson, supported by Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to apply for and accept the armored equipment grant program for portable and mobile radios for the police and fire department.
I'll move.
Move to approve by Council Motley, is there support? By Council Beyondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
At the committee of the home meeting, we discussed the proposed moratorium for issuance of sale, production, and processing of cannabis pending the development of zoning restrictions. It was moved and supported to move it forward to the council.
Support, I mean, I'll move.
Move to approve by Council Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Johnson, is there any further discussion? Council Johnson.
This would be considered the first reading, then? Thank you.
Thank you, first reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
We did go into a closed session at 9:16 AM, and when we came out of the closed session, it was moved and supported to forward the potential agreement for the settlement of an absentee grievance to the council meeting today for approval.
Okay, council?
So moved.
Let's move to approve the agreement by Council Friedle, I'm sorry, Council Johnson, is there support? Is there support?
I'll support for some discussion.
Support by Council Friedle for further discussion, for the discussion, Council Friedle.
Of which there's been plenty on this, certainly in closed session, and the reality is, we've come to the conclusion that moving this forward to another step could potentially cost the city significantly more, both in terms of costs financially, as well as the moving around of employees and bumping of employees, avoid all of that additional havoc, so to speak. I think it's in the best interest of the city to get this accomplished, so it's, it's a painful decision, but it's, it's the one that's necessary to do when you're in a catch 22, so to speak. Thank you.
It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing, Council Motley.
A total catch 22, which is the only reason I will be supporting this badly. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, thank you, Council Motley. Council Paulson?
Mayor, I'm just wondering if there is such a thing as abstaining from a vote because
Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you, Mayor. So, obviously not a best practice. The, I mean, the ultimate answer to the question is that nobody can foresee the vote, but that being said, the fact may not necessarily be a no vote, or, or that there would be no occurrence of a vote, because generally speaking, abstentions would fall to the majority.
Okay, so, but best practice is not to do an abstention because of conscience?
The best practice is always to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey, Council Paulson. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, thank you.
It's a very short meeting on the 21st, and I have no further items.
Thank you very much. Britt? So move to item number 10, Commissioner Lee is on reports. Does any city council have a Commissioner Lee as a report they'd like to provide this evening? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Rights Commission met last Monday night. We had a short meeting. We are still in search of a couple more members, and they asked that I remind everybody that it is National Pride Month, and to remember that love is love, and to make sure you treat people with kindness no matter what. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, thank you, Council Johnson. Any other Commissioner liaison reports today? Council Beyondich?
Yeah, planning and zoning, we basically went over everything that the meeting was about, but it was nice to chat with the people that came in for the variances and hear, hear from them, so, very good meeting. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Council Beyondich. Any other meetings? Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we'll move on to item 11, department head reports. Start from left to right. Britt, any further reports to be given?
Just a reminder that it's the Land of the Loon weekend, and the parade's at 9:00 AM on Saturday.
Land of the Loon, 9:00 AM.
Always a good time of the year.
Let's get rockin'. The celebration begins. Thanks, Britt. Brian?
No additional report from legal, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from you, Pam? Elections are coming up, and anything you want, we'd like to disseminate.
Elections will be coming up soon. Absentee voting starts on June 28th.
And we will be having a primary, correct?
There will be a primary. We have seven candidates that filed, so one will be eliminated.
Very good, thank you. Jenny, anything from your department?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We all received a packet of the statistics from the library, very comprehensive. It was distributed, I would assume, from the friends of the library, or from the library themselves. But Jody, our governor, who comes to all our council meetings in the audience, is there any additional information that you would like to disseminate as, as one of our department heads? Good evening, Jody.
Good evening. I just have fun news. So this week is Big Truck Week on Thursday, so just a reminder that the street in front of the library will be closed. We will have all sorts of vehicles for you to come and look at. They will also have buns-and-go food truck will be in the parking lot, and then we have a couple other visitors that will be tabling at our event. And then on Friday, we have an Arrowhead Library System Legacy Tour, and it's a comic stunt juggler. I have no idea what he's gonna juggle, but it should be fun. Looks like the weather's gonna hold out, so that one will also be outside. And if you haven't picked up your packet for summer reading, there's plenty of time. This doesn't end until August, and we have packets for littles, so if you want an easy packet, we can do that. We have medium and hard, and we have all sorts of other events this summer, and we'll just keep putting them on our, our event page. You can pick up our June calendar, and also you can just give us a call and ask us about the events, and we will let you know what's going on that day. That is all I have for today.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, any other department head reports? Seeing none, we'll move to item 12, council reports. Does any council have a report you'd like to give this evening? Council Beyondich?
Thank you. I would like to thank all the generous donors that donated to the various areas in Virginia, so that is very encouraging to see. And switching topics, Britt, would you know how many trees we lost during this last storm?
I know of at least four.
And the only reason I ask is I've been approached by some constituents concerned about trees that are marked to come down, and I, I think we need to be very proactive on some of this, because the trees that are falling are damaging cars, houses, and every time there's a storm, I think we all hold our breath. The boulevard trees are so large, they're beautiful. I love the trees, but they are causing damage as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been kind of talking through a few things about ideas or activities for downtown and revitalizing our downtown community, I've been approached to... and revitalizing our downtown community, I've been approached regarding art walk and things that we could do in our community. And in the past, I know we've asked our constituents to give us their ideas, submit ideas for maybe how to save, you know, on our budget. And I'd like to ask the taxpayers, I'd like to have them reach out with any community building activities for either our, our city or our downtown. So if there's any citizens out there that would like to reach out and send an email to, is it mayor, council, at virginia mn.us, I would greatly appreciate that. Just now that the sun is out and it's bringing people downtown, people are asking me what are things to do, what is Virginia known for? And I'd like, I'd love to have some ideas brought forward, if anybody has them, for community building ideas for the city of Virginia. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Paulson. Okay, anyone else? Council Motley?
Just a reminder to the public that starting in a couple minutes, we have concert in the park, 6 o'clock to 8:00 PM this evening. The weather's looking beautiful. Get out there and enjoy it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Motley. Okay. Food truck it is tonight. Okay, thank you. I just have a couple items before we move to adjourn. First, I've been, I called by one of the organizers of the Finnish festival, which is going to be held here in Virginia. People from all over the United States and other countries will be coming in at Calhoun Hall, and it's going to be celebrating the history of Calhoun Hall and the Finnish migrancy here into the community. It's gonna be a very festive event, and they're very excited about that. And they've asked me to give a little welcome. I'm happy to do that, and I would, I'm gonna be asking Council Beyondich to help with that as well, being a strong, supportive member of Calhoun Hall. So we'll be working together on that, hopefully get that accomplished. So that's gonna be some exciting, that's gonna be a huge event. A lot of people coming into town for that, so let's give them a warm welcome when they come here. The other part is, I know that we've all given a cause about blight in the community, and we've been trying to do as best we can about blight. We have people that we've hired part-timers, summer help, to mow grass. And the grass seems to be the biggest blight, and along with garbage bins being filled with all kinds of things that shouldn't be in there. So first of all, long grass. If there's somebody who has really long grass, just give us a call. Call 748-7500. Ask for our Jim Brown up there, or someone up in planning and permitting department there in code enforcement, and they'll write it down, they'll put it in the database, they'll go out and take a look at it, they'll take photographs of it, they'll notify the owner, try to get that cut, so they'll do that. And if they don't, we usually do that. And so we'd like to also give a reminder, garbage is for garbage, not old recliners, not mattresses, not pieces of metal, not broken up strollers, because we can't dump that stuff into our garbage truck. And most of it is, are coming from rental units. So I'll be asking, once again, to send out notices to those who are, are those places around town that have this continuing garbage issue with this on a regular basis, to notify those landlords to make sure they tell their tenants, don't dump that stuff there. Use other areas to do so. It creates a huge problem for us. We can't dump the garbage. We have to send a truck with a couple of people out there to try to dump the garbage out of there, pull all those things out of there and take it up to landfill. And they're overwhelmed because it's all over the city. So please, please use garbage bags, use the garbage container properly, put cardboard where cardboard's supposed to go. It's just gonna help us be able to deliver the service more effectively and efficiently. So please, you know, be cognizant of what you put in those garbage containers. Thank you. And then the last thing I have is the long grass. Now, if there's blight, we have a long grass, yards that are in really bad shape, garbage all over the place, abandoned cars, things that are considered to be blighted properties. We send letters out, we do the same thing with long grass. Send somebody, someone out there, take some photographs of it. If they're in violation, send them a notice, and most people will comply. But there is a percentage of residents out there, whether they're tenants, landlords, whether it's private property, it doesn't matter, that do not comply. And they do not comply with the notices that are sent out. They don't reply to the, they won't sign for the letters that we send out. So we have no choice but to take the next step in legal action and serve them court order to comply. And I just signed, I don't know how many of those today. If you get a letter, all we're asking you to do is comply. If you can't get it done right away, call us. We'll work out an agreement and arrangement to help you keep your property clean. But don't ignore the notices because you're gonna be served with a court order. So for those of you who are in violation, or you neighbors are in violation, don't hesitate to let us know because one of the goals and objectives is to clean up this city the best way we can, and blight, blight seems to be on the rise in every community, but in Virginia particularly, in some of the areas of town. So please, use the garbage cans appropriately and comply with the letters moving forward. So let's all work together to keep our community clean and safe, so, thank you. So nothing else to come before the council today. We will stand adjourned to our next council meeting, which will be on Tuesday, June 25th, right here in the council chambers at 5:30. Have a great week, everybody. Enjoy the Land of the Loon Festival, eat lots of food, and enjoy the, enjoy the entire festivals. So have a good day, have a good evening, be safe, be stand adjourned. Thank you.